I want ladies in the place.
I'd like to call a awareness special meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education. Mr. Boobler, who would like to rock off?
District four, Amber Franceschi.
Here.
District two, Billy McGovern.
There.
District four, Phil Pruitt. District five, Randy Phillips.
Here.
May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to motion.
Mr. McGovern, with a motion, may I have a second?
I'll second you.
Mrs. Franceschi, on there. Okay, Mr. Boobler, we will review your capstone presentations.
Thank you. I'm gonna stand up and turn my mic over here. So everybody got it? So I'll go through this, and this really just summarizes the, uh, this first year superintendent. Of course, when I moved here, I didn't know anybody. My wife lived here. And, uh, we have thoroughly enjoyed being in Mercer County. And, uh, not just being in the school system area, but being in the community. Because it's a great place to live, uh, it's close to a lot of places, but yet you're, you're removed enough from the big city. So it's been really good. But I chose this picture for the front of the capstone because this is what it's all about. And I know we've got Tua, he was sitting on the stage with me when the picture was taken. But that's what it's all about, is taking kids, starting on the preschool, kindergarten, first grade, all the way through. A bunch of hard work over the years and, uh, just being able to celebrate all together. And packed full of gymnasium, which was great to see for the first time in the last couple of years. That, I thought that picture captured a lot of, uh, just a lot of emotion and feelings and hard work and getting through the pandemic. And, uh, and getting, getting back to a little bit of normalcy. But I thought that was a great picture for the, uh, cut. Before I get started into the standards, I did want to thank a few people. Uh, of course, my wife's here, Hillary. Uh, she's been a great support. Not only is she a great, you know, she was a great coach to life because her dad was a coach. But she was also a great administrator, assistant principal, principal's wife, athletic director. All those things take a ton of time away from family, but she's always been real supportive. And of course, she's been a great superintendent wife as well. So, uh, I think all those experiences help because she understands the time. If you want to do a job correctly, how much time that you gotta put into, uh, to, into the job. So I want to thank her, and Harrison Jewel. We took this picture in downtown Harrisburg. We used to think about how pretty that mainsure is on Harrisburg. I think the building is different colors and, uh, so forth. So also want to thank the board. Of course, Tua couldn't be here tonight. But, um, I often say that, that I've been a part of, of some mediocre teams, too. And I've been a part of some great teams. And it, it is so much more fun being a, involved with great teams to get together. They got one common goal in mind, and that is to be the best. And that's what we have right now. And it's just been great. This isn't about me, truly about this team, what we've done, uh, this year. So I wanted to thank each one of them. And of course, my I R B team, which is the board chair, uh, Randy Phillips. And then I've got a former superintendent, former high school principal, and former basketball coach, Dr. Fred Carter. It's been a great asset to me, and I, I really enjoy getting to know him this year. We've got a lot of things in common. It's great to have somebody to, to throw ideas off of. He gives me a lot of ideas that, that work for him. You know, here's some things that work for me, may work for you, may not. You know, and then also, here's some things that didn't work for me, uh, that you may not want to make sure you don't do, uh, you know, a superintendent. So and then also, uh, Mr. Michael Rowe, me and him go back to 2001. We took our first assistant principal's job, uh, together at Shelby Valley High School. And, uh, and, uh, we, we started our administrative career together. It's been great, because I already knew him, but it's been great to have somebody that I can trust. I can throw ideas off of, that has superintendent experience under the belt already for a few years.
I bet they, they thought we were heavy out and came in.
Yeah. We were highs with Shelby Valley, they were used to administer their type. And, uh, we were a school commander every now and then. And we'd bust them first a couple of things, and they'd, they're more boys than I am. There's still some today that bring you that down. We really enjoyed those years together, I know back then. So I'll skip the standard six first, because that was my PGP that you all approved last July. For this upcoming school year, which was collaborative leadership. I picked that because I moved into a community that I knew nobody. So to, to, uh, bond and, uh, to learn the partnerships and, and really grow those. That's why I picked the, the standard six for collaborative leadership. I've got some pictures down there, but just a few things. We're in the, the beginning phase. Well, not beginning, we're in the middle of it. Of developing our new district mission, vision, and model, uh, uh, for this district. I, when I first got here, I said, what is the district mission, vision? Nobody could tell me what it was. We had to dig and dig and dig, and finally found it. So it hasn't been really pushed, but I say this, for our mission and vision statement. It will guide and direct and lead everything that we make, decisions that we make for the school system. That's what we'll go back to as our district and mission vision. So I'm really looking forward to that. We've already got a new logo out. I always talk about the triangle. You want to be great in academics, arts, and athletics. If you're great in those three, you've got a great school system. So we've already got one that incorporates those three things. I've met with some, some different companies. I know Hitachi. Remember them, talking, trying to look for partnership with them on technology grant. First time I met the whole staff, I wanted to share with them what my personal testimony is, so they knew where I was coming from. And then also, I brought my expectations to them too. So I said, look, you all don't know me, but here's what I expect. First block, I expect to do the best. And to be the best, here's what, you know, I, I feel like this is what we've got to do to be the best. So I was, I really, uh, enjoyed sharing that testimony with all the staff, uh, day one on the job. We partnered with Whittaker Bank, you know, I run around the track every two, like this morning, it's Tuesdays, I run around the track. I go down to the track on Tuesdays, and I noticed our scoreboard was really old, like old screw-in light bulbs. And I'm like, oh, if we're having this, we can't have screw-in light bulbs. This is 1982 scoreboard. So we partnered with Whittaker Bank, and they bought, they said, hey, well, not only do we want to do the high school field, we want also to do the middle school field. So that was a $32,000 partnership. Now we're in partnership with them again to get our new softball, baseball. They're a good one, softball. But we're in, partnering with them for one baseball as well. And also, one thing that I, I carried for my last district that I was at was, hey, it, it's tough on handings down to get into games. And, you know, asking them to pay three to five dollars every time, all these, there's a million ballgames now. So we partnered with Kentucky Farm Bureau here. They gave us $8,000 to purchase every ticket for every kid to our home for every season event. So that was a good partnership as well. We took, you know, back in the first semester, we had to, we surveyed the stakeholders to have their input. So we could make some decisions on masking. We had over 2,200 responses for that. We partnered with, uh, B C T C, uh, for some engineering pathways. We had a college fair outside. Of course, being around high school, they always had a college fair a year, uh, but never done one outside. So it was kind of interesting because it was a little bit windy, because it's central Kentucky, get a little wind. So, you know, we've got pamphlets and so forth, so we had to chase down some pamphlets and brochures. But it was a success. We were able to socially distance that way. But we did have 23 colleges and universities and holding, parking lots full there. And you know, one thing, my first year as superintendent that I really enjoyed, and we talked about, I know you said something about 20 days, and we put them together 21 days. Is the networking, because I always tell young administrators that the higher you get, assistant principal, me and Mr. Rowe started with, it's up to principal, all the latter superintendent. The higher you get in administration, the lonelier it gets. And that's just part of the job. But what I've enjoyed is with their new, new superintendent training and, uh, is getting to know other superintendents or former superintendents, the current superintendents. Because that's a tight-knit community, and that is doing a lot of superintendents rely on, is that, that networking of superintendents. So I really enjoyed getting to know a lot of superintendents around the state this year. This is one thing I really enjoyed, there's a lot of, there's three pictures down here. There's kids, the classified and certified, and we did this all in the same day. We would do the classified at 8:30 in the morning. At lunchtime, we'd feed the kids at lunch. And then superintendent advisor council meeting at lunch. And then we do the staff at 3:45 after school. We do this, uh, once a month, the first semester. Once every other month, second semester is how we do that. And I, they had a lot of great ideas for the superintendent advisor council for our school system, and I enjoyed getting to know them. And a lot of them, when I liked to hear the last meeting we had, they said, now, are you selecting a new superintendent advisor council meeting? Or can we be on it again? And I was glad, it was glad, I was glad to hear that they were excited. You're going to be disappointed if they weren't able to be on next year. So I said, I don't know. I hadn't thought about it. I was trying to get this year out of my belt further, so. But it was good to see I was, you know, that they were excited about being on again next year. So Whittaker Bank partnership, Kentucky Farm Bureau tourism, you know, Kansas State University Harrisburg, we're trying to give a little credit for him. But that was my PGP. And we, I, like I said, I didn't know anybody when I moved here, but I've, I've met a whole bunch of good people that have one common thing. And in this community, not just the schools, in this community is they want to be great. And there's a lot of people that want to partner with us to allow us to get there. So standard one, strategic, um, leadership, as we've held individual meetings. One of the first things I did was call each one of, of the board members and say, can we go out to lunch or, or dinner? Let's meet and go over what's important to you, and then what's important to me. Of course, we'd already had long meetings, of course, in the, uh, the, uh, going through the interview process. But it was, those were really good meetings to start, you know, start the year off, before school got going. Looking at modeling and reinforcing our, our values here at Mercer County. Looking at the financial, uh, $25 million is what Mercer County usually, uh, so having to try to juggle that plus ESF funds on top of that. Which a lot of new superintendents never had to deal with ESF funds before. So that throws another wrench in the, the new superintendent training that we have. We always have cat, cabinet meetings as the directors here in central office. We have cat monthly, or five weeks of cabinet meetings. And then we have weekly instructional and operational meetings, uh, monthly for those. We did random drug testing throughout the school year, and that's not just for kids, that's also staff. So we do staff, not, I don't know how, what the percent is, but not too many do, do staff still. I know in the background, you can see our softball and baseball new project, working with the architects there. I traveled up to Kent and Boone County. Boone County has a brand new elementary that is state of the art. So I wanted to see what the newest, state, you know, the best that out there is. I want to look at that. And I also wanted to see the elementary that's the same size as what Boobler was looking to build. About 950 or 950 in Kent County. So I did that, and then, it's a bit like buying a house. I said, if you go buy a house, I often, uh, one month later, you're signing the papers and have closing. But I learned a whole bunch on, uh, negotiating, just what you have to do to acquire land through K D, from the municipal school system. But, you know, our board, and we wanted, we wanted this prime piece of property. That was our number one, um, plan. And I knew that, and that was, I mean, everybody knows that's going to be the prime spot to show off, you know, showcase the new elementary school. So it took a lot of back and forth. We thought it was over at one time, but we made one last phone call, and we're like, oh, they're still interested in doing that. So that negotiation was a long, drawn-out process. And today, the church walked in and signed contract in the office. So as soon as I got that in my hand, you know, it was just a great gift. And I immediately stand and said to all of them, I said, look what I finally got. You know, is that signed contract for that. But here's a picture of me speaking to our juniors and seniors, went to the faculty. I did my testimony to the juniors and seniors this year at high school. Instructional leadership, we do I-Rating, that's our common assessment across, um, for K eight. And our I-Rating results are, there is great news. And you all will hear two weeks from now, for me, our spring numbers are in. Math and reading, uh, fall, winter, and spring, math and reading in every level increased dramatically in a lot of places. Our kindergarten is off the, I mean, charts. So it is great news to see that in every category, every school, all of them went up significantly for the most part. So that was really good news for our instruction, our M T S S multi-year support system. We are really, we got the skeleton there this year. Now next year, we are in meetings this summer about how to make that even better. Now we've got the skeleton, that's put the beat and muscle and all that on, on top of it. So we're, we met with our counselors, and we're really going to, uh, hit that even harder next year. These big touchscreens that I'm using here, these one screens. Our high school, I did our, uh, I wanted to do some teacher observation at the beginning. I'm like, we've got old projectors that would pull down screens. So I haven't been in school like that 10 or 15 years. So I said, we have to get this new technology, because when our kids go to college, this is what they use right here, or more, you know. Now these, now your student does have these in them in college. So, uh, but they, we, we took all those projectors out, put them in one screens, and ESF funding helped with that. This is the classrooms. This is one that I want to talk about, our seal of art excellence. Today I had a, uh, call from a kid from Harbin County that works for Fox News. And he said, I saw where you are, one of, or the first, uh, in the state of Kentucky to do the seal of arts excellence, the K D's recommending. And I said, well, that's, that's, we're excited about that. Because I told him about the triangle, and he said, well, I'm gonna send you a Zoom link right now, and you're, you're gonna jump on Zoom. And we're gonna do a story tomorrow morning on Fox News about our seal of arts excellence. So I sent him the PowerPoint, and that, that's the first slide. But we're really excited about that. And I always tell, uh, everybody, and I write something like a world record, I always will. But we're really trying to be great in academics, arts, and athletics. And that's what, and that's, that's our goal. And that's always been my goal here, and this seal of arts excellence only helps those, those kids. Because that, that, I called the kid, he was probably 25, 26 years old, the one that did the interview today for Fox News. He said, I wish I would have had something like this when I was in school at John Harbin High School, because I was a marching man kid. And I felt like I never got recognized, because I was in the arts. I had no, you know, no, there wasn't any, nobody ever paid attention to me. And now they're telling me that you're going to pay attention to those kind of people. So I said, I wish I could sing, and I wish I could play an instrument, but I want some soul back, and I just can't do it. Yeah, so, you know, I said, I enjoy the arts, I just, I'm not very good at it. We've had future teachers. I try to talk to them a couple of times a year, because we need them that. I know in Lincoln County, everywhere else, uh, we need teachers. So I try to go around and speak to them, talk about the positives of being in, in education. We want to decrease, this is one of my goals for next year, is decrease the achievement gap, especially at the kindergarten. Trying to decrease that gap. We've got a wide, wider gap than what, you know, I really like right now. And then I put this on here, I think this is great. I don't know if anybody in state of Kentucky does this, but maybe Lincoln County does. You might want to chime in here. For our kids, we pay the first two. But our board is saying, hey, we'll pay for the first five classes, that's 15 hours. That way, that way, if you want to be a second semester freshman when you graduate from Mercer County, you can be that. And you don't, it doesn't matter how much money your parents have and all, if they paid for it or not. Because before you had to pay for the, the last three, you got the first two free. But we're going to pay for all, uh, the first five, you know, because our goal is to have everybody being a second semester freshman when they graduate. At least, they could have been 30 hours.
I tell you, they can still do that, though. Still have that.
We say graduate, we say postgraduate. So standard three is cultural leadership. Like I said, I shared my personal testimony. I've been on culture. At the end of the school year, uh, we sent out a video, we went over, and we had 14 students made a 30 or above ACT. And I said, let's make a video, and then I'm gonna take you out to La Frontera, Mexico, restaurant downtown. And we had a lot of views on that, on that, uh, ACT 30-plus group. The kids really enjoyed it. I got a lot of emails from the, the, uh, staff, especially like the elementary and intermediate staff. I got emails from them saying, I'm just glad to recognize some kids for their academic pride. This, this kid would be living, uh, with elementary and intermediate. And I'm just glad somebody's finally recognized, uh, the kids that are at the top of the, uh, their game on, on academics and ACT. So I, we were really excited about that. We'll do that each year, and they enjoy going to La Frontera. Now, one time I went over, remember, I'm a high school career person, so I've never been in elementary. So this is new territory for me. When I walk in and somebody asks me, can you read to our elementary kids? And they're, they're out, and they're just so, they just take it all in, like you're, I mean, like you're some Michael Jordan superstar, you know. It's just amazing to see, and I really enjoy being in elementary schools this year, because it's new to me. You know, and I said, I've never been around a lot of elementary kids as far as during the school day. Superior title awards winners, we've done that each, each month. And, uh, we've had, you all talk about the crowds, this is, we have, this place has been packed. And it's been great to see, because we've had a lot of, a lot of kids show up each for me, um, and we recognize them. We, you know, we started the plays of allegiance. I don't know if, I don't know if it hasn't been done in a while, or never been done, I don't know.
Never been done since high school.
Yeah, we grab, we grab little ones when they come in, they'll go up to the mic and, and, and it gets them, and it's, what you're doing is, not only are you doing plays of allegiance, but you're also teaching little kids how to do public speaking, getting in front of the crowd, getting over that nervousness of, uh, public speaking.
I've been on the board this much this year, and I don't think we've ever, uh, since we've been since I've been.
So that's been fun to start that. The touch note, I know Holly does a great job. I'm gonna thank her as well. Because touch note, I never heard of touch note until I went to do superintendent training. And I, the, uh, the superintendent from Northern Kentucky School System, he's like, here's where I do this touch note. It's a little postcard that you put a little picture on, get your snack, send it to your, send it to your, uh, superintendent secretary. And then put your little note on there, and then they mail it to them to their ass. And I'm like, that's the greatest idea. I've, I've, I've gotten so much good feedback from, uh, from just the things that I get on emails or whatever, from faculty doing that touch note. I did have a picture, I just couldn't fit it on there, flipped hamburgers after. I love cooking, and I think me and Mr. Rowe flipped hamburgers at Shelby Valley for faculty back then, but we used to love doing that, and still do. Of course, I love attending games, playing some game competition. My wife does as well. She joins me a lot of times. And I want to thank Dr. Carter for the butterfly thing. I know you all got the book as well. That is a, I love inspirational things, and that is a great inspirational book. And what I enjoy is that the last day of school this year, I went over, not the last day of school, the closing day for the middle school the other day. I went into the middle school, because I had to get some contracts signed, they didn't sign it during, they forgot during PD. But I noticed Mr. Bryant, our principal of middle school, was handing out the butterfly thing to all of his staff. So he was going to go through that. So it's kind of like carrying it off, you know, I'm saying you're passing along, but. And that's what you have to train your administrators, to be leaders, and, and then pass it down to the next board. So butterfly thing, I really appreciate that him introducing me to that book, because it's been very valuable. One big thing, we had a principals meeting yesterday morning, and I looked everyone in the eye, and I said, uh, day one, we got Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, three-day week, first week of school. I went to him, calling in every kid, whether it be classrooms, or grade level, whatever, and said, we do not tolerate drugs, alcohol, weapons in this school system. No, or do we racial slurs, or bullying? Day one, I went to tell them that. So I know, you know, this year, every time we had a drug or alcohol or weapon, we put them up for expulsion hearing. So they have to come here and go through that. I want that to be the norm, because, uh, they, we're going to raise the expectations. And they need to know that we're not going to put up that drugs, alcohol in our schools. So, uh, that's why, here's some kids for the Halloween costume contest, that's a hard, it's hard to judge. Human resource leadership, uh, this is where superintendents have to be creative, because it's so hard to get. I mean, before you have 20 or 30 applicants, they have a job you had open, and it's hard for you to see one to get on there. So a couple of things we did, I know the board has, uh, we did the biggest pay raise in school history, 5% across the board, plus the step. And then for classified, because we were worried about losing them out to the private sector, they did a dollar minimum. So a lot of those levels were combined, so we went from like 14 or 15 levels to seven or eight. So, so that averaged out to 10 and a half percent raise for all the classified. So certified got 5% plus step, and then, um, classified got about an average of a 10 and a half percent raise. So that's going to help attract and then retain, hopefully, good classified and certified staff. And then also, we started, we can't see this, but you may be on your book there, that every Friday, we put out on all our social media sites that what the salary is and what job openings are currently open, how many days a, a week, a year that those jobs are. And that's, that's helped, because they, they can see, you know, when you put down, just look at the salary schedule. A lot of people want to go against the salary schedule, but when you put down, a teacher can, uh, director of facilities can make up to $88,000 plus 70%. They're, they're thinking, oh, I may be interested in that job. Or a teacher could make up to $69,300, I may be interested in that. So we put up two, so they can see what the max, you know, and that, that's a, maybe they're recruiting to it. Standard five, that is managerial leadership. And of course, mom help, I want to, I want to discontinue that partnership, and hopefully never have to partner with one ever again. Because that is hard testing for COVID. But we, we don't, you know, it was really neat that they would come in free and charged for us, because it cost, uh, district money and do COVID testing. Our architects, we worked really, really close with them with the new, uh, with the new softball, baseball project. And you see these good buses right here. One thing that I learned quickly is that we're about to run out of buses, because we've got old buses. We're not getting any reimbursement whatsoever from the state, because, and Mr. Rowe was talking about that. You had the same problem you started as well, is that they're all over 14 years old buses. So we use ESF funds, luckily they approved it, to get six, plus six, so we should have six coming in the next couple of weeks. And then we order six more for November or December. So we should have 12 new buses, uh, coming in, uh, here shortly. So this time next year, we'll have 12, and hopefully we'll get another six, we'll have 18 new buses. So standard seven, so the superior title award, we went down, we just didn't want to give them certificates. So standard seven, so the superior title award, we went down, we just didn't want to give them certificates. So we said, hey, what would a kid really like? And I really liked blizzards. So I said, well, a kid would really like a blizzard, free blizzard, too, if they were. So every time we gave out a spear title award, the next day on Friday from the board meeting, the next day I'd go around the classrooms and say, hey, your class, you've got a spear title award wearing for this school in your class today, let's all give them a hand for one spear title award. And they'd be all like, oh, how could I really be a blizzard, you know? So they, they learned what a spear title award was, plus they able, you know, paddled back those kids that were winners before that. So that was a great partnership with Derek Queen, getting that in the four H. One of the first things me and my wife did when I came here, because I've never been around like FFA, four H, we went to our first, somebody invited me, the four H director, extension office director, invited me, said, why don't you come over to the hen auction? I said, do what? They said, yeah, it's a country hen auction. Never heard of it, what is it? Oh, you're gonna learn all how to make a country hen. And I, we learned so much on the process. I didn't realize how long it takes to make a country hen. Now, I wonder if they're so expensive. Well, then we was like, man, here, we'll buy this country hen. We walked out there, we just bought a bunch of hens. The reason, it was the minimum over a thousand dollars, or right at a thousand dollars. There was, there was two of them went right at a thousand dollars. So we didn't want a country hen. We did get education on, on that, but it's been a great partner with them. I know they do a lot of things with our school system, and that was one of the ways that those kids, not only do they learn how to do country hens, but what we walked away saying to each other was that shows them how to do public speaking. They can get up there, look you in the eye, they can tell you all about the process, and they're gaining great leadership skills doing that. So I thought that was really big, out front of them. Of course, we've been met with a lot of local representatives, a general senator this spring, so I've been, you know, talked a lot, tried to, tried to tell them what we're for in public education and what we're against. So, you know, one was my neighbor, so I get to meet, talk to her a lot. CKC, our co-op, it's been really good to, to, that is a great resource for us to throw ideas off. Aiden Dunn does a tremendous job as the CEO there. And of course, there's another connection network of superintendents that we get together once a month that we get to throw ideas off. And every Wednesday, we get on Zoom meeting, we get to throw ideas off on Zoom meetings for now. So that's been a great partnership, our co-op, CKC. Twice this year, we've met with all the Kentucky University presidents, the superintendents I'm talking about, with CKC, and throwing some ideas off them, and how we can, how we can partner better and break the barriers down, and how can they help us, like getting more teachers out there. So that's been, that's been a great, and then also, what can they offer our kids coming in? How can they get them, retain them? Rover's been good, they do a good job with scholarships and then, of course, recognizing our kids. It's really, that's been a great partnership. I put down there the, I went around to a few churches and gave them my personal testimony about life as a roller coaster, surviving in our nation, worse be, gonna die crash. And then I put these two, these two pictures, I want to tell you all about that. That is a neat tradition that started here at Mercer County Senior High School. This is out front of high school, but this is the first grade, and they walk them over from the elementary in front of high school. And what they do is they bring the forestry department and conservation department here, and he brings a tree, and they tell them all about how to plant a tree. And they go through all that process, and then they plant out these trees in the back and say, the senior class this year, when they were first graders, they walked over and was like, you, they planted that tree. And then they'll say, last year, seniors planted that. So it's a neat tradition where they walk them across, across the street, over to the high school, and they get to, to meet smoking and bear lovers. And they really love that. But that was just a neat, that's just a neat old tradition that's something that Mercer County makes mean special. You know, that's something that a lot of places, that I've, I've never seen them have. But that was great to see that for the kids. So next steps, once we get our, this, I was getting through my capstone, then we're really gonna start trying to do the second half of getting this vision, mission statement. It's gonna be our new motto. We're really gonna put a lot of time into that this summer, trying to get that going, getting that finalized. Continue conversation with all staff, superintendent advisor groups, organization, business to continue strengthening our collaboration amongst each other, to continue to build a team. And that's what we're doing, we're strengthening the team and making it more effective and efficient as we go. We're gonna deepen our relationship with CKC, and I use the word deepen because we got a deeper learning grant that every school I think, system in the state of Kentucky, I'm sure you all did that as well, is they're gonna, they're gonna create partnership. They got billions of dollars to come together with all the school systems to, to look at some innovative ways to increase instruction in schools. We're gonna, like I said earlier, we are really, we did the skeleton last year on our NTSS program. Just kind of put the, we threw it out there, got together, and said, this is what these look like. Now we've gotten out the skeleton out there, now we're really gonna get, get it all fine, tuned, tweaked this coming school year. And we hired a new counselor at every school, elementary, maybe at, at middle school, an additional counselor to help with this right here. And then one of the two counselors at the high school retired as well. So all schools, all four schools, getting a new counselor at least next year. So it's really important for us to educate them on our NTSS ideas and beliefs and steps that they're gonna go to next year. This is gonna be huge. I'm gonna do a lot of praying because I've seen the, the bids come in on what the square footage is, you know, the dollar per square foot, on these other projects around the state of Kentucky the last couple of months. But this is gonna be big, this is gonna be big for Mercer County because it's, we've got old buildings, a lot of old buildings here, and our kids deserve a new innovative state-of-the-art building. And it'll be for kindergarten through our first grade and fifth grade, be around nine, fifty kids. So it's gonna be one larger elementary schools in Kentucky. But it's the best way to get the most kids under a new school building instead of just doing a little small one here and then ten years down the road, do another little small. Might as well just get, get big much like Ron 27. We're gonna continue to promote those three things I talked about, academics, arts, and athletics. And we're gonna try to be great in all three of them. And we're gonna keep pushing that, that mindset across the whole school, school district. We're gonna raise expectations in all areas of our school system. I told, I tell the instructional team all the time, and that's the principals and our instructional coaches, this is an outsider coming in the first semester, and I'm gonna sit back and I'm gonna go to a lot of classrooms, and I'm gonna tell you what we can do to get to the next level. So that's what I did, at Christmas time, we had an instructional meeting, and I said, here is the number one thing that we gotta do in the second semester, and especially this summer. Because the number one thing we gotta do is increase our rigor, or raise our expectations for our kids in classrooms. Because now, we gotta teach everybody how to raise expectations and increase rigor. Because I can tell you all to increase rigor all I want to. You may think you're already at the top of your game, you may not know what increase rigor means. It just means get harder, you just make a test harder, what, what does that actually mean? So we are gonna do PD at the beginning of the school year, what does increasing rigor mean? What does that mean? So that's, for us to get to the next, next level academically, we gotta increase rigor, we gotta increase the expectations we have for our kids in classrooms. And we gotta challenge them. It's okay if we fail a little bit, I know a lot of times, especially the young, I see it the younger they get, oh, little Johnny's so sweet, I don't want to hurt his feelings by making him get his first beat in his career, whatever it is, you know? So a lot of times you feel sorry for little kids if one of them have all X or whatever it is. Hey, it's okay, let's challenge them, that's, 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 that's pushed them to the, to their, to working even harder than what they did before. So that's, that is a big thing that we're really gonna get home on this coming fall. And I always say, be great, no titles, or always be great. Because that is a mindset that I've always lived by, is whatever you do, you do it to the best of your ability. You go hard at it, you want to be the best, not one of the best, but I always have a mindset is, you be great in everything you do, whatever, I don't care if you're a cook, custodian, a teacher, a administrator, superintendent, board member, whatever, whatever role you play, you be great in it. And that's how I always, in my, in my emails to the staff, is always be great, no titles. And I put this picture on there, and you're also messing, the printer messed up, or I had two of them on, or whatever. They hired and messed up in there, but they had two of those pictures on. But this picture, of course, this is the first FFA banquet that I've ever been to, because most of the schools that I went to didn't have FFA. But I learned a lot about that right there because what's, what this is, is that's Mike Jones, many of y'all know him. He was the FFA teacher here for thirty-one years, I believe, and he has two years somewhere else. So he's retiring thirty-three years of education. But he is a great teacher. And to see the FFA banquet, and then to love on him and, and just how great he's been. And then plus, him pouring out how all those kids over those years have made his life much better than what it would have been if he hadn't been a teacher, and just the impact he's had on all those kids. Makes it saying, hey, this is why I'm in education. So what they're doing here, they had all the seniors, and it's, I mean, it's kind of like teary-eyed, it's sad when you go to these things, because at the very end, all the seniors, all these jackets you see lined up, they were all over here on the side of the stage, well, you walked up there, and I noticed with the, with the bathroom, they had a blue jacket. They go up there, and they took their jacket off, and they take it off the last time, and they put it on on their pegs. Then the next senior coming, they put it on peg. Well then, what made even more teary-eyed this year is when they asked Mike Jones, because he had a sport coat on, and you get, I want you to take your jacket off and hang it up just like we did. So he goes up there and puts his jacket on there. But I'm like, this is what education's all about. It's not only about kids, but it's also about adults, it's about the whole team. And just the love and, and, and bond that those kids and teachers in education get over the years is just, I mean, he had a whole bunch of former FFA students come back to the banquet just because that was his last year. It was a really big, really big experience to go to that FFA. And then, of course, this is what it's all about, thank you all, for all the help. Made my first year of success, be great, no titles. And then, last day of school, the seniors at the graduation practice, they went over to the kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and they did their walkthrough. So here they're giving high fives, and all the little kids made good luck for Ms. Peters' class, and go seniors, wow. And just to see that excitement was really, really neat. And that's what it's all about. And we sent this to the printer, I think, Thursday night, right? So Friday, me and Hillary went to the state track meet. If it hadn't went to the printers, I'd put two-time state champions in school history made Friday. But then after we sent this to the printer, because Friday, our boys and girls, for the first time in school history, won the state championship at the KCSA class of double A on the state track meet. So overall, like I said, it, this has been an unbelievable experience. I love being a superintendent, I love being a coach, I love being an administrator at the high school level, I love being superintendent. And it's been great moving here to this community, it's been, you know, a lot of people, we've met a lot of great people. We've got a great church that we go to, and it's just been a great community. And we enjoy it, I say we, me and my wife enjoy it, the kids enjoy it because they're only forty-five minutes away now from their school, so two and a half hours from where I live. We're in Pikeville. So that's been, been good, too, the kids have enjoyed it. I love being superintendent of Mercer County Schools, and I, I, I'm really excited about the direction Mercer County's going with and the new projects that we're gonna do. And just to, to, you know, if we had enough time and money, it would be, I mean, it's just, the things that we can do here, but we're gonna do as much as we can with the time and money that we've got. But I'm really excited about, you know, moving forward the next, next few years to see these new facilities and projects. Again, thank you, I'm not saying thank you at the beginning, but I'm gonna say thank you again at the end because you are a big part of helping all this team be successful. And that's what it's all about, it's all, we're all one big team here, trying to be great for our kids and so we get a great education. But thank you all, if you all have any questions for me on my capstone?
I don't have any questions. I will just say that, you know, it's my first year as, as a board member, but I've been a parent for many years, have kids within the school system. And I will just say that I've seen a lot of growth just in this one year. So I hope that's encouraging for you, just to know that I've seen it really develop quickly. And I, I'm really excited to see what is gonna happen from here, so. Excellent job.
I've been on board, as I said, well, this is my twelfth year, and I'm getting this year for another term, which I questioned whether I was going to or not back here two or three, I didn't know for sure whether I was going to or not. I had a lady call me a couple of weeks ago, and I hadn't turned my paperwork in yet at the court office. And she asked me, she said, are you gonna run for board again? I said, well, yeah, I'm planning on, I got my paperwork here, at the house, I just haven't taken it up yet. And I knew her, I knew the lady well, and I asked her, I said, are you gonna run? She said, no, I thought I would, I'm not going to. She's in my district. And I said, what do you need to run? She said, no, if you're gonna run, I'm gonna run. And, and I, I thought about it at the time, I thought, well, she might be a better younger agent than I am, maybe a better fit for it. But we, and I told her this, I said, we've got some, we've got some interesting and exciting things coming up ahead of us, and I really want to be a part of it. We've tried to get something this done for twelve years. And for like the athletic stuff that we're doing now, we're putting a new baseball field up. And the second year I was on board, I started pushing to have, try to get a new baseball field. We never really could have anybody that would help push it. Larry and I, Larry Edgar and I would try to push it, but I was so excited when you and the other board members got behind it and helped to push that through. And I've had some people say, why are you doing that? You don't need to spend that money for that. You don't need, why, why are you doing that instead of this? And I said, and I told one fellow, I said, do you know when that baseball field was put there? And I said, it was put there my junior year in high school. Nineteen sixty-two. And the reason that it was put there where it's, where it is at now was that's when we built the football field there to start it. And the field was actually, the baseball field was actually down in that, toward that corner, down with tennis courts on everything down, down in that area. And I said, we had to move it away from the football fields, keep interfering with the roads and that and everything, you know? And I said, that's when, that's when that, that's how long that baseball field has been there. And I, he said something about, well, we need to, we need to do some things to help the kids here, help the kids there, or whatever, you know? I said, what about the kids that play baseball here? That we've been on that field for sixty, something, years, quite a long time. And I'm, I'm so excited about that part of it, plus the possibility of us going ahead with the elementary school and everything. You know, I've discussed, you know, what my thoughts are for future, even after that, which I may never do, I may not be long, very long enough to see any of that, but I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to, to see us try and go in the direction of, of helping all kids, not just, some people say, well, we're all, we're doing this in separate sports, we're, we're sports minded school. Well, you've got to be sports minded school. You've got to be academics minded, you've got to be minded for everything. And, you know, like we've talked about in school meetings before, we, we have lost some students who are just because of athletics. I know we have, because the parents have told them that. And I told them, I said, well, at that time, it's against law to do what you're doing, but, you know, now with the new laws that are going out now, with kids being able to move from one place to another on their own if they want to, and that's even more important to us. You know, we try to hold on to our kids, not necessarily to attract other kids. I mean, if they want to come here, I'd tickle to death in that one. But I want to keep our kids, Mercer County kids. Mercer County kids need to go to school in Mercer County. And that's my feeling. I always have it. But I thank you for the job that you've done and the way that you've helped us to, to push some things along that need to be pushed along. And you've done a great job, of course, on this day.
Well, first of all, great presentation. I expect another lesson. You really go back. I wanna echo these two. I'm sure Cliff and Larry were here, they'd say the same thing. I'm blessed to be on this board right now. And I'm so thankful that the timing wasn't worked out because when we needed superintendent, you jumped on the call very quickly. And I always said, and I shared this with you and others, the second I saw his resume, something, and I, you remember this, because I said it to you. And I said, "I gotta get this guy on the board. There's some, some things that he just felt." And that's where I talk to him. But you've done a lot of things in one year that, as Debbie said, we didn't think you'd be doing. I mean, here we are getting ready, getting bids on a baseball softball project, at the land, you know, winter school, we'll get that rolling. Things we need to do for a long time. But I'm also thankful for your leadership from the standpoint of your passion, your, your drive. I think that's a big thing. I think a lot of our teachers and some of our administrators have needed that drive that instilled in them. Because I think some of them lost it. And I'm hopeful that, that this will be a fire a little bit. And I think I've seen that, some of them. I know some of our administrators, I've seen that. I've seen that fire. You've given that to them. And I'm incredibly excited about that. I think we can do what we can do with the budget, with the raises. And hopefully that'll help us retain and recruit the best. And I'm very excited about that possibility. Biggest thing is, you know, you've got a great support system. I mean, Hillary's here, Harrison, Jewel, just, we love them to death. And they have just been so instrumental. You'll say, you know, you don't do it alone. I don't even say that. And we're so happy that your family's here, you're part of Mercer County. I hope, pray here. You gotta be in Mercer County at least three more years, you know, if not longer, because you know, I've got sophomore, so I, you know, I wanna keep this rolling. But, you know.
We have Miss Gregor.
Okay, maybe a little longer. So, you know, we will keep y'all around for a long, long time. Especially if I get to serve on the board. But I just wanna thank you for everything you're doing. I'm excited about what's coming. I think we are on the cusp, as you said a thousand times, of wonderful, wonderful things. And I'm gonna use a line from Mark Stoops saying, "Just get the starter broke." Because, you know, we did it from the on. I wanna thank Dr. Carter, Mr. Rowe, for their guidance. And you guys have been wonderful. And I appreciate the professionalism. I appreciate you staying on top of it. And I don't feel like I did anything because you guys, you guys really, really, really did a great job. You're part of that team. So I hope we do stay in touch even after all this. But again, I wanna thank you so much for everything you've done in year one. And I'm excited to see where we go forward. Good job.
Can I say one more thing? I just wanted to, to talk about what Randy was, I just wanted to add to what he said about, about the fire and the drive. This community, this school system has needed something to be excited about for a really long time. And I think that we got that this year. It's, we, we, you can feel it. You can feel a change in the, in the wind when you hear about Mercer County schools now. Just in the community. And I'm really grateful because I am up there. So we needed it and I just wanted to say that, that I think, I think that we all feel that excitement.
And I like how you, you put it out there to the administrators and the staff, you know, expect to be great. And I think, you know, we talked about the board big, you know, when we passed the Saffir schedule, would that attempt, you know? We're investing in you now. Show us we did the right thing. You know, go out and be great every day. So let's, let's keep that. When I see that elementary school going up, I'm gonna be really, really excited.
And that triangle, right? I've got, I've got lots of kids too, so that's really, really exciting, um, for my kids.
Yeah. And I've got a son too. He was involved in drama and the choir and he's never had that kind of support. We had just in, in one year, we never had that kind of support. And I'm glad to see we're getting back to middle school and we're gonna continue to build that program. So, and those kids, and those kids get scholarships too. Those kids can go to college on that stuff. And we build that program, we're going to send a lot of kids to college. And I'm excited about that. We got, we got some, I mean, we got KMEA kids, band, bar. We've got a lot of kids, very talented young people, upcoming in this district. So, yeah, it's, it's all exciting.
There's one thing too that, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's Randy or somebody mentioned to me, the, the the scholarships that our kids got this year was, what was it?
It was almost there.
Three point two D and they had graduation, but I don't know, you know, others were coming in still.
Yeah.
But I don't know what the record was.
I don't, that's what I was wondering. I don't remember for sure what, what, where we have been with that sometimes.
I know the counselor says it's been one of the highest ever. They didn't know, they didn't wanna say it was ever because they didn't have a shirt on.
We had a lot of men and students from a lot of kids in that class. We had a lot of kids who really go after that day.
I'm a little farm boy and I, you know, I use this, back through the years with different things to work or whatever, you know? I use this kind of statement. Sometimes you need to catalyze to get things going. And I don't know if everybody knows what catalyze is. Anyway, the, you, I've, I've seen you being that catalyzer with us this year. Our, our staff, I won't, I, I'm not saying our staff is bad at all because they have it. But they just need that little touch, you know, to get them stepped up a little bit.
And you're not afraid to roll your sleeves up when you get in there. And that's, you know, that's really something I'm in special esteem. Because there's so many superintendents that give a lot of commands from their offices and they don't ever leave their office. And you're not like that at all. I mean, you're always out and about and seeing where you can be physically present and involved and encouraged. And I think that probably is one of the biggest difference makers in terms of staff and morale. And that's how you make change. You can't do it just hiding behind an office desk.
And your visibility has been something that you should be commended for. You have been in every school, at pretty much every event. You have been there, and been present. And that means so much to parents, everything. I mean, it's been, and he does cook them meat hamburgers. I was over there and cooked them. He, he looked me up on the Black Stone. It was pretty good, so.
I've had a period and I don't, I would just like, I mean, I don't have a sleep.
The one thing I've always told us though, is make sure you take care of your family and yourself. You know, make, make sure you take care of them as well. So, take that time if you need it.
I will add that to my job description. Be a cattle prod.
There you go.
That's a joke, I was gonna say.
Like I say, I'm just a little farm boy. I, I worked for corn, worked for corn for forty-five, forty-four, forty-five years, but, but I'm, I'm still a farm boy. The FFA I came through, the FFA program up here, back way, way, way back. But, yeah, that's, that's, that's one of the things that I've thought about, used, that's taken a lot of time through my, through my lifetime.
Ready? Anything else, Dad? Keep your general mind open.
I would say quick, the monthly baseball player, we go ahead and grant slam the administrator. We don't have that. And how can we work with him, only one Mr. Boerder, you're seeing what he is. So, great job on hire.
I echo that. I've had the privilege the last eleven years to work with two hundred and forty-seven new superintendents. And he's, I say to you, congratulations. You've succeeded in passing a superintendent training. And you might say, "Well, big deal. Everybody does." No, everybody doesn't. We've had people fail in this training, unfortunately, through those years. And what happens if you fail, you lose your certificate, lose your job. And he's not needed that. He was a great situation. I, I really am a firm believer in situational leadership. I think you got the right person in the right place at the right time. And I think the board did that. You definitely, you needed someone like this man who was so organized. And so, he wants to be first and everything. He's one of the most independent people in state Kentucky, if not the. And that's evident. That's common. And that bodes well for what this district is gonna be in the future. I carry that analogy with cattle prod a little bit farther. I'm a horse person. I've got a horse farm, Tennessee walking horses. I, I think when you as a board hire a new superintendent, you hire one of two kinds. You hire a workhorse or a show horse. And I don't really wanna hire a show horse, but that person looking to be superintendent here or get the biggest district of the year or have the biggest salary or stay.
Stay.
I don't see that in this guy. This guy says, "Mercer County is where I am. I love Mercer County. We're gonna be the best we can be." And he's a workhorse. So I can see if he doesn't have a grown up and speaking enough. And I admire that. I think that's what you need right here. I think that's what you need everywhere on this case of the workhorse instead of the show horse. I've never been a part of that. I won't be a part of that. But he's doing a great job. He represents you well in all of his meetings. I'm gonna do superintendent training cabinet. And we were talking earlier, we spent, I've spent seventeen days this year with Jason and the other board, ten members in training in Frankfurt elsewhere. And with this and that, I've been here once every quarter. So that's four more days. So he's spent twenty-one days to meet this year, a new superintendent trainer. Guess what? That's a full month of work that he can devote to this district next year that he's got out of the way, is behind him. So he's rolling forward. On July twenty-seventh, the commissioner's vacation will begin with him and the other board, ten folks that will shake their hand and go to the meeting and present their certificate of completion. And it's all good going forward. The sky's the limit. And I'm looking forward to seeing great things in this district in the future. I'm gonna be watching the papers. It's not gonna be that bad stuff. It's gonna be good stuff. You know, even people will little things like work will be okay, a new elementary school. Wow. You guys are gonna have so much visibility where you're gonna be. And it's just phenomenal. What can occur when you get the right picks. And this guy knows, and every superintendent in Kentucky knows, a successful school district is first defined by a board and a superintendent who are on the same team and rolling the boat in the same direction. And I sense that here. And that doesn't mean you're not gonna disagree on things. You are. It's like a family. Families disagree, but you put your hands together and you work it out and move forward. And so what I say to you now is, there's a whole lot of superintendents going over each year. You guys have a good one, a really good. Make sure to keep. So hold his head to the fire. Make him work hard, which he's gonna do anyway, because that's a part of his DNA. But make sure you keep him here in Mercer County. He's where he needs to be.
You heard it. You're not allowed to leave.
He's not going anywhere. Keep him here.
I'm not going anywhere.
All right.
Good pleasure.
Anything else for me, Jerry? If nothing else, can I have a kind of motion to approve, to adjourn the meeting? Mr. McGyver, next motion. Can I have a second? Mrs. Franceski, second. It's all in favor. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
First thing we want to do is get motion set. So we didn't have any people motion.
Can you make it yourself?
I can. I can.
I can sing a year.
Not me. Not the best part. Practice what you can.
Hey, good luck.
Thank you so much.